Kane?
Aye.
Shainer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
I move we adjourn the closed session. Second?
Okane?
Aye.
Shainer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
No, you can keep going. Call the roll, please, twice.
Shainer?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Okane?
Here.
Please stand for a moment. Silent prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Annika Baker? Annika here. Come up. Come on up to that podium there, please. Whereas the Youth of the Year is the highest honor a Boys and Girls Club member can receive. Club members who have nominated embody the values of leadership, service, academic excellence, and healthy lifestyles. Teens with clubs throughout the United States compete at the local level and can then move forward to compete against others at the state, regional, and national level. Whereas last year, the Local Youth of the Year winner, Heaven Schumacher, went on to compete at the state level. Whereas this year, the Boys and Girls Club of Suland had four nominees: Annika Baker, Gracie Carroll, Mia Franco, and Eliza Julia. How bad did I do that? Julie? Okay. Whereas the 2023 Youth of the Year is Annika Baker. Nowherefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City Island, behalf of City Council, deem it an honor to commend and congratulate Annika Baker and the 2023 nominees for their accomplishments. Present this to you. Thank you for being here today. And feel free to say if you worked. You're going to live at the state level, I hope?
I don't know. I don't know what to say.
You guys want to say anything? All right. All right. Environmental Advisory Board, Audrey Anderson, please come up and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
Hi, I'm Audrey Anderson. I am a high school teacher at Salsu High School, and I was on the board for the last two years. And then my term expired, and I had just had twin babies. And I thought, oh, you know, I better stay home with the kids. And I just can't stay away. I miss everything so much. So I would love to be back on the board. I sent in my application a couple weeks ago. So, yeah, that's what I'm looking at. And did you have any questions about my experience on the board?
I like that you said that you were a systems thinker. So we are grappling with how to get more people to sign up for recycling. Do you see any flaws in the system that we currently follow? Do you have any ideas about how to educate people better?
Yeah, I think a big issue that we were looking at was rental property and how a lot of times landlords don't necessarily want recycling. And we were like, what do we do about that, you know? And then we also looked at sending home information with the students in the schools to, you know, they get like the folder where they bring it home to their parents. And there's a perfect opportunity right there for some outreach, so.
I was very happy that you brought up recycling at the school, too, because I was at Covington for a number of years. Now I'm in Sioux City Schools. And it seems like schools do not have the recycling effort that I feel like we should, considering how much paper and plastic we go through in a school day. So I really appreciated that.
Thank you.
No, I couldn't agree more. I think that you learn some of those habits, you know, at the school. Or if we can instill some of those things, then they ask their parents, you know, why aren't we doing this at all? What could we do to?
Yeah. And I do remember I worked in an event for the AAB, and it was the kids impressed me. Like, I was like, these kids are amazing. They knew so much about the planet. And they were educating me, like, I was amazed. So we'd love to learn more from them.
Well, I appreciate you applying again.
Glad you're here. Glad you enjoy serving.
I do. And I'm also trying to recruit people. Like, everybody join, please.
Thank you. We have some other commission boards, too, so.
Yes, I know, right?
Recruit there for us.
Well, thank you so much. And I'm sure after my terms are up with that, then there's other boards I want to try.
All right.
Got to love it.
Great.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You have a good day. We'll go to the Consent Agenda Items 3 through 11C. Consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call is requested by a council member. If you want to speak on an item on the agenda, please come up as I read that item. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. Remember to state your name and address whenever you come to the microphone. I'll move the consent agenda. Second? 3 is a reading of the City Council Minutes of March 6, 2023. 4 is a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment Actions. 5 is a resolution authorizing the Police Department to apply for grant funding for the Tri-State Drug Task Force. 6 is a resolution adopting plans and specifications for the Loraine Avenue Sewer Point Repair Project. 7 is a resolution authorizing payment to Tobin Electric for the Discovery Parking Ramp Lighting Renovations. 8 is actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving Amendment Number 2 to the Consulting Services Agreement with HGM for the South Mulberry Street Improvements Project. B is a resolution terminating the Consulting Services Agreement with Everor, consulting for the 28th Street Landfill Post-Closure Monitoring Regulatory Assistance. C is a resolution approving a Consulting Services Agreement with SCS Engineers for the 28th Street Landfill Post-Closure Monitoring and Regulatory Assistance. D is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to CNC Lawn Care for the Public Works Seeding Project. E is a resolution approving a contract to Institute of Form Technologies USA for the Floyd Intercept Sanitary Sewer Lining Project. I want to go back to D. How soon do they have to have this stuff seeded on that? What's the end date? Because I don't know anything about grass, other than if you don't plant it in a month, it has an R, it doesn't grow. So is that?
Board and Fair City Engineer. This project is for our miscellaneous seeding that we have through the year, and it stops at September 15. That's the recommended.
Right, but if you're planting in June and July, it's not going to grow anyway.
Right.
No, that is correct. Most time, we're doing it in the spring or in the fall.
Does it say it's going to be after July 1 in the notes, or no?
I don't know. But July 1, yeah, that would be because of the?
The new year.
The CIP.
Right, right. Yeah. Really, I agree with the mayor. If it doesn't end with an R, it's not going to work.
All right. F is a resolution approving Amendment Number 1 to the Development Minimum Assessment Agreement with Salzman and Salzman Management related to the development of land in the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area. 9 are purchasing: A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Blackstrap for Rock Salt. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Standard Ready Mix for Concrete Products. C1 is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Bob Brown Chevrolet for a pickup with a long box. C2 is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Bob Brown Chevrolet for a pickup with a utility box.
I had a question about those two items.
Like Fleet Supervisor?
Hey, Travis. I just didn't know. I mean, obviously, we did our due diligence, sent it out to a number of them, and got some answers back about why we maybe weren't able to get a certain model, this model, that model, and why the government pricing wasn't going to come out. I mean, do we forge ahead on this? Is that your recommendation?
Yes, it is.
Do we think there's a better time to let for this? Like, what?
The manufacturer times that, order times are very small right now, and they're not all open at the same time. So, yes, I think we need to forge ahead with this, because prices are just going to continue to increase if we wait.
Yeah. Well, and it's just, it's seeming more and more that it's like, well, might as well get what you can get.
Absolutely.
Try to replace and make it work, and you're not getting the same model you maybe wanted, or?
We're getting the model we want, and it's not necessarily the timeframe that we wanted, because it's taking so long for the?
Well, sorry, and I meant like other things that we've been purchasing. Maybe you don't get the exact one or something. Yeah, because it's just, it's tough being in this position, you know, wanting to make sure that we're getting the best use of our dollars, and we're getting what we want, and we're getting a competitive price, whether it's a government rate or at least other bidders. And to only have one coming back is worrisome.
It is very tough.
Okay. Thanks, Travis.
C3 is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Bob Brown Chevrolet for a pickup with a short box. Mr. Moore?
I'll make a motion to amend C3 to award the purchase order to Kneffler Chevrolet.
Second? Based upon?
Based upon the bid amount being less than the, what is it? Is it 3%? Less than the 2% that we have authority to accept.
It's 0.41% over.
Oh, six.
Absolutely.
Keep trying to get it up to 5%, I guess, but 2% is it. But yes, it's 0.41%.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Okane?
Aye.
Shainer?
Aye.
Shainer, applications for beer and liquor license. See the list. 11 for boards and commissions. See the, and committee minutes. Anyone want to be heard on any of those items? Seeing none, go ahead and vote. Passes 5-0, recommendations of planning and zoning. 12 is a hearing and ordinance, rezoning 1520 Morningside Avenue, 1525 South St. Abin, and 3814 and 3918 Peters. Petitioners, Commonwealth Development, P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that. Second? The public hearing is now open. Does anybody hear from P&amp;Z? Okay. Chris, you want to tell us about this item?
Chris Madison, Senior Planner. The petitioner is requesting the rezoning to convert the former Sioux City East Junior High School building to apartments.
That's most recently the AEA building?
Correct. Yep. They're looking at a 38-unit apartment complex on the site, so asking for rezoning from public institutional, the current zoning, as well as a north-south alley that is city-owned, that's NC4 to GR, General Residential.
The north-south alley, that's the one that comes off Peters?
It's between their parking lot that goes down the ramp and their main building.
Oh, that north-south.
Do you have some conditions on this?
It has a tunnel under it.
Correct. The Planning and Zoning Commission did put a condition on that a site plan come back for their review.
When would that be? Just so that goes back to planning and zoning?
That would be whenever the petitioner has that site plan ready. So I don't know if there's a date for that yet, but once that's submitted, we would then take that through the public hearing process to planning and zoning.
Come to council?
If you put that condition on, it would come to council. Yep.
Move the item. Do we want to put that condition on it with the site plan?
Because they probably won't do a site plan if we don't approve the rezoning, right?
So the Planning and Zoning Commission did put that requirement on, so they would review the site plan? Typically, it would just be a staff-level review. Unless you have that condition on your approval, that planning and zoning would be the final step for the site plan.
So without that condition being in our motion, you'll still, the Planning and Zoning Commission will still do the site plan?
Correct. There'd still be a public hearing process, notification.
Anyone to be heard on this item?
My name is Tyler Shear. I'm with Commonwealth Development. One of our vice presidents. I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have specific to the rezon request here. Overall, we think it's warranted based on the city's comprehensive plan and your current goals, and are looking to provide new life to this building and ensure that it can be a historic staple that kind of maintains its presence here within the community for the foreseeable future.
If you would see the email with all the council homework I got, I couldn't read anything about Commonwealth. What, where are you? It was so blurry. I don't know.
Yeah, no.
Where are you out of?
Absolutely. So Commonwealth, we originated in Wisconsin, in a small town called Fond du Lac. And over the last 20 years, have kind of grown that small mom-and-pop shop to be a naturally-known workforce housing developer. We are now active in 24 states, and the ninth-largest workforce housing developer in the country. We are a vertically-integrated shop with architecture, design, general contracting, and property management and development.
You looked at another deal in town, didn't you?
Uh, no. No, we have not done anything yet in Sioux City, but obviously looking to kind of get our foot in the door here with you guys and kind of get off on the right track here and potentially continue to do work here in your city limits.
I'd be thinking, I talked about, or I forget where it was in the notes, but it referenced some of the other schools that have been converted.
Yeah, but I could.
Not with you guys, but just other projects that have been done, yeah.
So, um, now I lost my train of thought. Okay, I guess that, that's fine.
Well, who will you be marketing to?
Students out there?
What's that?
Students out there and?
No. So it is IRS Section 42 Housing. So effectively, we are going to be targeting 80% of, yes. And it'll be deemed at 80% or below. So looking at Woodbury County specifically, we're targeting individuals making $68,880 on annual basis. That's pre-tax. So as long as you're making less than that, which equates to about $33 an hour, you'd be eligible to live at the company.
That was a concern on social media when it was covered that the request was being put into the zoning was the affordability and whether it was going to be market or, you know, targeted or what it was going to be set at. So that's going to really help the area.
So the playground down behind that was a parking lot for AEA, but it was a playground in the school when I went there. Is that going to be parking for this? Or where are you going to park most of the cars? I know there's some on the side.
Yep, so right now, there is three lots, kind of if you will. There's one below, and then there's kind of two up top. So obviously, we would look to kind of utilize those. But obviously, we would have to abide by the code. Right now, we've kind of done the math, and it seems that 38 units gets us there in terms of the required parking that you guys would like to see.
I was going to say, because I was having the same thought process. I read in the notes that you would have, had to quit parking. In fact, you'll have like 10 to spare or something, or 12, or whatever it was somewhere in there.
Yep, yeah.
There was a cushion. But to the mayor's point, the concern or question that I have is just other amenities and making sure that you maybe have those. I mean, if presumably, there would be some families there, some kids there, maybe in that area, and thinking about where there might be an outdoor space where they'd be able to congregate. And I don't know if there's one back there or not, or if it's all parking lot now. I haven't been. Is there, are there any amenities like that? Or do you have plans for amenities? What are your?
So we will have amenities within the building, consisting of a leasing office, a community room, a kitchenette, things like that for tenants to enjoy. There's not currently a playground there. Obviously, we would look to utilize a lot of that existing space for parking to ensure that we can meet your guys' code.
And there are a couple of parks in the area. One?
We've done a number of these historic rehabilitation projects kind of throughout the country. And, you know, obviously, each one's a little bit different and kind of presents various constraints. And I think this would be one of them. Obviously, if it was a ground-up, new construction project, that's something we could easily implement. But here, you know, we'd like to stick to your city code and meet the parking requirements, so.
Sure.
Right.
A little bit tough to implement a playground back there.
What are you going to do with the old auditorium?
So we would leave that open for city space, or, excuse me, not city space, tenant space. Another hurdle here is that we involve the National Park Service as well in the project. So there's additional limitations that come with the building as to what we can and cannot alter. And the hope there is to kind of maintain that historic structure inside. You know, that said, we will be doing extensive rehabilitation there. Right now, we're estimating about a $17.5 million development. So the units, when you walk in them, they'll still have the historic feel, but still have a lot of state-of-the-art finishes, you know, the average rent we'd like to see right now.
Does it have an elevator?
Yes, it will have an elevator.
Yeah, it does.
It does now, doesn't it?
It does.
I believe it does. Yep.
It does. I've taken it. I have to go in the back. You park in the back and go through the back door, and then you can take it out?
Get in afterwards, then, okay. Okay, thank you.
Do you have any issues with the site plan that's being requested?
No. If you guys would like us to come back, once we have it, you know?
Would be working with staff?
Finalized? Yep, yep. We are completely fine with that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Anyone else to hear? Hearing is closed. Passes 5-0. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
Nope.
I'll move that. Second?
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Okane?
Aye.
Shainer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. I'll move second and third.
Second?
Moore?
Aye.
Okane?
Aye.
Shainer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Hearing 13 is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the Cone Park Natural Service Trails Project. I'll move that.
Second?
Hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
No, it didn't. I was kind of slow on the buttons, sorry.
Passes 5-0. 14 is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the 30th Street and Pierce Street areas storm sewer improvement projects. I'll move that.
Second?
Hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5-0. 15 is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the MLK Transportation Center Cooling Tower Replacement Project. I'll move that.
Second?
Hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5-0. 16 is an ordinance amending the Sioux City Main Street self-supporting municipal improvement district. I'll move first reading.
Second?
Passes 5-0. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that.
Second?
Okane?
Aye.
Shainer?
Aye.
Scott? Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. I'll move second and third.
Second?
Shainer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Okane?
Aye.
17 is a resolution adopting an inclusive language notice. Somebody's going to have to explain that to me. Somebody else can move it, but.
I'll move.
Exactly what does it mean? Who's explaining this?
Hi, council folk. This is Semhar Geraketa, and Community Inclusion Liaison. The Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee created this inclusive language notice to just reiterate the fact that we are here to serve all folks in our municipality and just reiterate the fact that we don't discriminate in any of our practices, in any of our programming, in any of our functions as a city. And so this would be added at the end of all agendas. And just to remember and remind folks that, you know, I'm here as a resource that they can come back to and they can ask questions for.
So if you, so if you look at, so this is in addition to the language that's required, for example, on our agenda.
Yeah, because the ADA notice is the American Disability Act notice. And so this would just be an additional piece. Both of them come to me regardless. But just to, you know, it's a hot topic thing now that we're all talking about being better inclusive as a community. And so just to remind staff, volunteers, boards, all of those to be able to come and speak with me if they have questions on anything like that. This obviously is not mandatory, right? It's highly encouraged.
Exactly where are you going to put all this stuff? I mean, I think we do a pretty good job around here, and I don't quite understand, for example, it'll be added to this required.
And is it, if anyone is having an event as well, or any type of notice? So it's like, if I'm in the community and I need to apply through the city to do something or hold an event or close a street, you get a packet, right? Then with the stipulations and that information, and this would just be another part of it? It's the way I'm understanding it?
Yeah, and it's not something like your events if they have to go through me and I must approve them. It's nothing like that. It's on an annual basis. As long as you're having an event, you should just come talk to me and just double-check with me and see, like, is there anything that we can do to improve this, to make this more accessible, to make this more visible, inclusive to the community so that everyone can participate? There's a lot of things that happen in Sioux City that most people aren't always aware of for accessibility issues potentially, for language issues. That is really what this is about, is making sure that everything we do in this municipality, whether it be through volunteers, boards, commissions, our individual practices, and our jobs and events, that they're more inclusive.
And this will help attract some of those events, correct?
Yeah. We talked with Kristy from Exploring Sioux City, and she spoke about how a lot of the big groups that come in, whether they are acts or events, won't come in without an inclusive language notice or something of that sort. So we want to be able to attract more people to the city as well, to visit our beautiful city.
So somebody's renting the Tyson Event Center? Event?
Yeah.
They have to put this somewhere?
Well, they should. It's nothing bad.
No, I'm asking a question. Because I own a football team, and I don't like, I don't like guys telling me and gals telling me what I can put on my, so I think it's important that we know that.
Mayor, the answer is no. This is for city, if you read.
Well, read the deal here, Bob.
This will be placed at the bottom of city official notices and business. In addition, we will place it around at our facilities. But no, it's not intended that private people that come in and rent our facilities will be bound by anything.
I think maybe, Bob, though, the mayor may be asking. I'm just taking off on that question. Could we, would we then require third parties that will be using city facilities?
That's not how the resolution is currently drafted, but it does indicate for all city purchase orders, agreements, leases, and contracts that it should be included. So perhaps there needs to be a distinction made that it isn't included for those, like, for example, the Tyson that's run by a third-party organization, just for clarity, unless the council's direction is to include it.
Look, I don't know, I don't understand. First of all, I think we handle it here, but that's beside the point. I don't care so much about it. but that's beside the point. I don't care so much about it. I care about the scope of what we're trying to do here.
And I think.
Well, read the bottom there. That's what I'm saying.
No, I understand. And I think that it's more encouragement rather than enforcement. It's not like even if there was a complaint or a so-called violation and they contacted Semhar, it's not like, in my understanding, that Semhar has the authority to then shut the event down. She would just make recommendations of how to be more inclusive. And that's where, honestly, like, if I could change any of the language, was just that last sentence, any violation should be reported. It's the, again, I'm not, I wasn't at the last meeting. I wasn't able to be there, nor was I a part of the discussion to formulate this, but it's almost more encouragement that if you have any questions, need recommendations, or are looking for possible language to be more inclusive, please contact the inclusive, you know, liaison rather than any violations, because then it makes it feel like you have teeth or enforcement.
And Inclusive is a flexible committee, so, I mean, if that's something that needs to be changed for you guys to accept it, that's okay with us. I'm okay with that amendment being made if that's how that works.
Sure. There are plenty of votes. That's just, I just have concerns when it's a pretty broad stroke. So I probably will just abstain because I don't understand what the difference is of what we print now and what you're asking. Now, half of what you have here is already here, but now we're going to add even more to our council agenda, which I.
The half that's currently listed is only speaking to Americans with Disabilities Act. That's all that that speaks to.
That's what I'm saying, though, but Nicole just said you will add this down below.
So that comes with all the other protected classes that are there, the other 10?
Hit that.
So it's just an expansion?
Yeah.
The EDA was passed, now people are more cognizant of inclusion on other protected classes.
I don't want to speak for Inclusive Sioux City or Semhar. The intent was just to create a notice that we would put on documents, not in, not necessarily parts of contracts, but in documents that say, the city of Sioux City is an inclusive city that doesn't discriminate. That's all we're trying to do here. So to the extent that, be it further resolved, maybe you don't have to have agreements, leases, and contracts, because that was not the intent. That was the intent. When we post a meeting agenda, we have that at the bottom. When we send out an RFP, we maybe have that at the bottom, but not as a term of a contract.
And in our current form of contract, we include anti-discrimination language, which includes all of these classes currently. It's just in a different form than what's been proposed.
And I don't think our intent was to do that. It was just, or, it was to create a statement saying we're an inclusive community, and we want to publicize that as we send things out.
Be a positive.
To be a positive, not a negative, a positive.
I don't know if I'm allowed to technically do this, but I'll propose it. Is it possible to then just go from be it resolved, then all forms of communication from the city of Sioux City as a whole, including webpages, social media, press materials, proclamations, flyers, have this notice? Because the rest of those are not things that I control, right? I don't fire or hire anybody here, and I don't sign contracts typically here. Like I said, I want this to be positive. I don't want to leave this meeting and have people.
And that's where I worry about the last sentence. So maybe, would it be possible to defer for a week and then send adjustments on language, you know, or?
We're talking about violations?
Correct.
Language?
Yes.
Plus then the last resolute, resolved.
Correct. Is that the way? Because I would rather not just come up with a sentence right now. I'd rather write one out and then have it presented next.
Sure. And I'd be happy to check with Semhar and figure that out.
If you would like to defer it, Semhar and Nicole and I can.
And just any recommendations, then we would just send them your way, and we can formulate. As long as you're okay with that, Sem, that's, I would propose a deferral for one week, and that way council can make any recommendations so that it is a little more clear, or if they have additions or deletions that they would feel more comfortable adding, then it offers a little more clarity. But that way, we don't have to try to put it together right now in the spot, on the spot in the meeting, if that's okay with you. And then we would vote on it next week.
Hello. I just want to encourage, or highly encourage, that this is something that is very important to a lot of community members here in the Siouxland area and also neighboring First Nations. This is something that is traditionally, when it comes to non-binary and binary and everything in between, traditionally, we have people that were in those spaces, and we are still in those spaces today. So I would like to remind the city council that there are folks out there in our community that are still in these spaces, and they need to be included. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would make that motion to defer for one week.
I'll second Alex's motion. You understand, we're just going to make some amendments, but still going to have the intent of what you're trying to accomplish. We're supportive, but we want to just change some of the wording around, so there's no misunderstanding going forward.
So for clarification, changing the last paragraph of the proposed resolution as opposed to the inclusive language notice?
The notice itself.
The notice itself, okay.
The violation, the last sentence of the notice itself, where it talks about violations, may be reported to.
Sorry, I just want clarification. Are we switching the last paragraph and the notice, or just the last paragraph?
Well, I think the mayor was urging, and then Bob possibly agreed, that the last paragraph, just adjusting as far as leases and contracts, or something. I mean, I think, is that what it was?
What I have for notes are amending the actual inclusive language notice to maybe change violations to something along the lines of any concerns or questions should be directed to the Community Inclusion Liaison, instead of saying, instead of using the word violations, and then be it further resolved, we end it at flyers where we don't include permits, contracts, purchase orders, and things like that.
And that's where I think we just ironed that out.
Yeah.
Come up and.
Well, it sounds like we have existing language already, right, in our contracts?
Yes.
As it pertains to other protected classes.
The anti-discrimination language, we follow the state of Iowa's recognized protective classes. Those are included in all of our contracts and leases.
We're not necessarily striking it from there.
Well, then this will be at the next council meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because Inclusive, I think, has been working on this for almost five to six months, and we've taken it back at least 10 times or so. So we just want to make sure that this is moving forward and not stop halting.
I'm trying to help you.
Yep. We appreciate that. Thank you.
So the deferral for one week means it will automatically come back next Monday?
Okay, just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Citizen concerns. Are there any?
Let's take the vote on the amendment.
Oh, you're right.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Or, excuse me, the deferral.
Deferral.
One week.
One correct. Any citizens to be heard? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address. Seeing none, Mr. O'Kane.
I share in Tricia's frustration, because I was there when this first came up, and it was a member of the Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee that's no longer on the committee. So I understand where that's coming from. I do think that we need to push to be more inclusive, and I appreciated her comments tonight. We're seeing a trend going in the opposite direction statewide, and I don't know about everybody else, but since some of this legislation's been introduced, I have heard a number of people, from teachers that I work with, to parents, to other community members, that are very actively involved in our Sioux City community, talking about what state they're going to move to, where they're going to go. These are people that fill our boards and commissions. These are people that are professionals in our city, and it's very scary that the landscape of our citizens is going to change over the course of the next year due to legislation that's being passed rather ham-fistedly at the state. Everybody should feel safe. Everybody should feel like they matter, and any step in the opposite direction is incredibly arrogant. And that's my only statement for today.
You know, the state will pass a law before long that says you can't have that language, but we'll wait until they do that. Go ahead.
I don't have anything today. I'm out for a week.
All rested and all the money in your pocket.
Getting caught up.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, NAIA tournament time, so.
Neither of our teams made it.
I know, man. Hey, we got some GPAC schools, so a few GPAC schools are in, so I believe the local teams, I forget when Dort played, but I know that Briar Cliff is tomorrow at 1:00 PM. So, yeah, I would just encourage to catch some of the action. Go down to the Tyson Event Center, watch. I mean, it's incredible for the athletes, because you got to think, I mean, we're hosting a national tournament. This is their national championship, and that's a really big deal. And for Sioux City to host this for over 20 years in a row now is incredible. Corey Westra, Mike Skaggs, city staff, the people at Tyson, I mean, a number of people go into making this possible, and I'm just excited to be a part of it, catch some of the action, and I want to make sure we're the best hosts possible. So I would encourage anyone to please go down, cheer on a team, and just really welcome those people to our community. I'll have, Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. That's right. When is that?
It's Friday at 6:00 PM.
I was going to say, I don't have it on my calendar. Yeah, I was going to say.
What do we do, break that news?
I've never been, I've never been a part of that one. I was like, I didn't have it on my calendar.
You can dress up like a leprechaun and go yourself.
There you go.
Rent the car for you.
That's all I have.
Alex, did you straighten those young business leaders out that I indoctrinated?
I tried my best. I said, I said that the best part of our speeches, you know, you got to get the first swings in, but I was the closing argument. So that was the last voice they heard.
We got to speak to some young professionals, a lot of them out of North Country, up in Dort, well, they were Dorrans.
Northwestern, Sioux sponsors, yeah. Accelerate Siouxland.
Yeah. I move we adjourn. Second?
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Aye. Scott?
Yes.
Waters?
Aye.
Yeah.